September 26th. Well, welcome everyone. We have a nice crowd here tonight. We're getting you all here just to measure it too. The first thing I'd like to do is we, one of our former governors passed away last week and Dayton State yesterday had our state capitol Governor Braden Jones. I think his service was a day. So if we could, let's have a moment of silence in his memory and his honor. Thank you. And we have a number of people here this evening. We're always happy to have members of the public join us. We've got some things we want to recognize this week for, I think, this evening. Especially a young lady, Addie Gaskell, who was the winner of the Barstown Creativity Cover Painting Contest. And also with us tonight is Ingrid Horgan and Mary Spalding, who are sort of have adopted this project and I think they have a presentation they'd like to make to Addie. Or maybe they're, maybe you are, you rewarded her?
No, she's got it.
Okay.
Here, not me.
Addison, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for entering this contest. She has already painted the cover. It looks fabulous. It's a wonderful addition to Court Square. She added that pop of color that draws your eye. So hopefully people will investigate and see what is the Barstown Creativity Cover. And here is a gift for you from the city council and us. And there's a picture to pick it in there also. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Addie, would you mind if we put you on the spot for a minute?
Sorry.
What kind of got your interest in this project? How did you kind of go from being just a student, graduate student, to taking on a nice little project for creativity?
My art teacher introduced it to me and I kind of read about it. And it really intrigued me about how like kids can come to it or adults and get art supplies out of it. And I just thought that'd be a really cool thing to be a part of. So I submitted my entry and ended up winning. And then it was a very fun thing I got to do. I got some great people there and it's so.
We certainly appreciate your effort and your work. You really done a nice job on it. Well, thank you. Call on Councilman Hart or Councilman Hibbs. Do you want to give everybody kind of a little background on how this started and then where, who's taking care of it now?
Well, we came up with the idea to do the Barstown Blessing Boxes. Actually, Councilman Hibbs gets credit for the creativity cover. He wanted to do one that encouraged people to play with art and enjoy art. So that's when that idea was born. And then Ingrid and Mary came to us several months ago and asked us if they could adopt it. And they have done wonderful things with it. They have solicited donations, both monetarily and just people cleaning up their closets. They've come up with little kits with instructions. They've just really taken it to a whole new level and we appreciate that so much.
You guys done a great job. I gotta give my wife credit on that. Actually, she came up with the idea, so. But we really appreciate it. You've done a fantastic job. We walked by the other day and my better five-year-old little girl, she was like, "Look at that, that's so beautiful." And I actually went and bring my five-year-old there and helped me pick out which ones I liked the most. Sorry about that. She had a blast. We talked about it the whole rest of the day. But thank you guys for everything you're doing. You did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And just to kind of bring a little more attention to this, I think we have people from our leadership in Nelson County with us tonight. And I think you all have sort of taken on the responsibility for keeping the boxes. What was your job? Some of them want to stand up and introduce themselves and tell us what you all are doing.
I'm Tammy Eglon and there's a few others that are here. We're the members of this year's Nelson County Leadership Class. So we have to do a community project.
Blessing boxes.
Blessing boxes, yes. So we had to do some type of project so to be able to graduate. So I reached out to Betty and I said, you know, can you give us any ideas? And so she said that the boxes need a little bit of TLC. So we did a few repairs. Musics was so gracious to provide the paint, paintbrushes. So we repainted them all and then saved a lot, donated groceries and toiletries and we filled them up. So I don't know how long that lasted, but they might have been empty by that night. But we did stock those up.
We were awful grateful to you. That's been a good project for the community. They are, people use them, I can tell you that.
Yes.
Because they don't stay full very long. I don't know how they all stock them, but they, people aren't aware of them and are using them.
Yeah. And thank you Betty for the idea.
I appreciate it.
Very much.
You have anything else to add to what we talked about? Any questions from the council? Any more questions of these fine ladies? We're going to get into our regular agenda. You all want to say all you want. You're also welcome to leave whenever you feel like to.
Thank you.
I feel like you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lauren.
Great job. Take care. Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Good job. Congratulations. Okay. Next on our agenda is recommendations from the history of the review. I would ask the city attorney to read the summary of these.
Get it open, mayor. I was surprised there was only one page. I kept looking to see if there was more. Okay. COA 2306, Franco Wimpsett, applicant under request approval to replace wood picket fence with wood picket matching alternate heights with Gothic tops rather than the common picket with regular pointed tops at 114 East Breshear. Recommendation: Approval of wood picket replacement fence with alternating heights and Gothic tops. COA 2366, Margaret Ballard, applicant under request approval to plant two red buds at 204 East Stephen Foster. Recommendation: Approval to plant two red buds. COA 2368, Will Hardy, applicant under request approval to add a rear deck at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to add rear deck. Condition: Cannot start work until variance is approved by the Board of Adjustment in November. COA 2360 amended, Will and Alicia Hardy, applicant under request approval to change previously approved signage and lighting, signage, lighting, excuse me, at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of the signage lighting. COA 2370, Michael Lauricella, applicant under request approval to add two outdoor seating tables at 225 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to add two picnic tables with black or neutral colored umbrellas.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Is there any recuses this evening? Then if I could, I'd ask for a motion to approve the recommendations of the HRB with additions on these that were presented this evening.
So, who mayor?
Motion for Councilman Hibbs. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Governor. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, the seven to five saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. You all came in a bit after we got started. Were you here for an agenda item or just here to observe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're here to discuss when it is brought up concerning restrictions on our homeless population in our county and in our city, sir.
We'll get to that. If you're happy to hear from us.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
All right, next item is our road closure for the new life center on Thanksgiving Day. This is an annual event for them. I think the route and everything is the same as in the past. I know they probably contacted you two already.
Yes, sir.
Major Celia was nodding back there. Have you already been in contact with the city?
Yes, sir.
Do I have any questions? I'd sure make sure to answer those. If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the request for the new life center with their 5K run walk on Thanksgiving Day, November 23rd. It'll run between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. So people getting some exercise before they exercise their eating abilities later today.
So, who mayor?
And motion for Councilman Hart. Is there a second?
Second, mayor.
Or Councilman Williams? Any other discussion? Seeing none, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion's carried. And then we've got, next is our minutes from our September 12th meeting. And we also had a special meeting on the hearing prior to that. If there's no additions or corrections, we can approve that by unanimous consent. Those regarding our tax rate in upcoming year. Okay. I might just, for your all's benefit since you made the effort to be here, I'm moving agenda items up. A second reading as it relates to the camping on public property. And I'll ask Audrey if you could read a summary, then we can have some comments.
Thank you, mayor. Summary of ordinance B 2023-15, Camping on Public Property. An ordinance relating to camping on public property in the city of Barstown, Nelson County, Kentucky and establishing Chapter 130, Section 10, Camping on Public Property in municipal code ordinances. Whereas camping activities may constitute a public health and safety hazard when conducted without the proper security, sanitary facilities and precautions. And whereas the necessity to clean up, repair or immediate public property that has been used for unlawful camping may result in substantial cost to the public. And whereas it is the obligation of the city to keep the city in a clean and accessible condition. And whereas it is the obligation of the city to prevent the accumulation of trash and debris and to reduce the risk of both structural and brush fires. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Barstown, Nelson County does hereby ordinate Section, excuse me, Chapter 130, Section 10, Camping on Public Property be added to the municipal code of ordinances to include. Section 130.10a creates definitions for the chapter. Section 130.10b through d establishes time prohibitions for camping on public abandoned and/or vacant properties. Section 130.10e acknowledges that any person violating this ordinance shall be guilty of criminal trespass in the third degree and subject to the sentences and fines as set forward by state law. This ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its passage approval and publication as required by law. And the summary was certified by city attorney.
Okay. I guess before we get into our discussion, I'll ask you all if you'd like to identify yourself and we'd be happy to recognize you all. For the comments, we had some comments at the last video of this, so we'd be happy to hear from you.
Do you want me to stand up?
Sure.
I'm glad to. I am Reverend Jackie Mese Summers and I'm a pastor here in town. We co-pastor. We are not here representing our church. Our church has not taken a vote or anything else on this, so I just like to make that clear. We're speaking for ourselves as community members and as Christians, as people. And so our concern is because, I read an article afterwards after this. I hadn't heard the entire ordinance, so thank you. But our concern is there were comments made that people have choices. They can make, there's places they can go. The problem is there's not places they can go at this point. We do not have any kind of permanent homeless shelter. We've been cobbling it together and really the pandemic broke that, the whole room in the end. We're still doing some of that, but for a church to host just for one night, they then have laundry for all of this, which runs $40 or more when you go to a laundromat. And then you have to have people who will do that. Finding people who feel trained enough to serve as an innkeeper is very difficult, so they're needing to hire people for innkeepers. And there's just, it's a very different situation than when it started out as room in the end. We are still looking for a place. We're working with Bethany Haven, working with pastors in town, looking for someplace that could be a ongoing shelter situation in which we would work with our homeless population to either find jobs or if they weren't able, that they would have volunteer opportunities in the community and some things to give them some self-worth and to feel good. But we're just concerned when we just start saying we're going to basically criminalize homelessness of camping out. And I do understand concerns of businesses in the area and problems going on, but the bigger question remains, so where do they go? And what are we all as a community doing to help our homeless population? And so that's, we're here maybe looking to see if you all have some ideas on that, where might be a good place to turn for that.
I was getting ready to ask you the same question.
I'm glad you're all thinking the same way, Mr. Mayor.
That's the problem, isn't it?
Jim Summers, the other half of the co-pastor team, First Christian disciples of Christ and president of Barstown Nelson County Ministerial Association. We want to clarify a little bit that our homeless shelter do have Bethany Haven, Harbor House. Those are not the problem areas. The problem we're running into is room in the end. And it's because most of our guests are struggling with psychological issues. And that has manifested itself in the community and has caused problems and we realize that. And we don't want to hurt businesses. We don't want to make, have people feel as though they are threatened even though realistically they may not be when someone may just be yelling or whatever. But we don't want to scare people and we don't want to have people ill at ease. And we understand that. But that's the problem we are running into at this time. And we are looking to try to find a permanent place for room in the end rather than bouncing around from church to church because we can't enforce anything. We can't tell somebody, okay, you're going to be doing, if you don't have a job, you're going to be doing a community project. Because, you know, they're at this church one night, they're at St. Vincent de Paul the next, they're at St. Joe's or for, and you can't.
They leave about seven in the morning.
Yeah, leave by seven in the morning and they're out on their own. And that's when the problems happen, is during the day. So we are working along with that and we want to work alongside. My concern with this ordinance, as I've seen in other communities, is, okay, let's just get people out of the way and so they're not causing problems. And they are, folks are causing problems due to what they struggle with psychologically. But I'm more concerned with putting an officer in a tough situation now who has to enforce this. Okay, you need to move along. Okay, they move, officer goes and does his or her duty. And then the person who doesn't have anywhere to go, looking around the corner, oh, they're gone, wait a few minutes, okay, I'm back. Officer comes back an hour later, hey, I told you to move on. Now there's a confrontation with somebody who's, doesn't have the rationale, the mental capacity to deal with a conflict situation. And now we have an officer who might be in danger. I don't want to see that either. Or the, the person who's struggling with homelessness may be in danger because they can't control their temper, they're having issues, they're having, who knows? All kinds of issues. We're also, I would like to ask the city council, one of the problems we're having is through street outreach, we are seeing people are acting erratically and people in that ministry are filling out forms to get them, working with the police department to get them a review as a therapist. And what happens is they use a local agency, shall remain nameless, is doing a good job, but the person in street outreach fills out that form, hands it to the police officer, police officers, thank you, does their job, takes them to the agency. And what happens every time is, oh, I'm not going to hurt myself, I'm not going to hurt anybody else, I'm fine, I don't even know why I'm here. Well, because you were yelling and threatening people and tearing and stuff and whatever. But, you know, people who by the time they're out on the street have been in 72-hour observation, have had struggles with family members, have been trying, have been kind of forced upon to see somebody and they're not at a place where they want to receive the help. And so that's, we need to think of other avenues. And there are other avenues we discussed at a past meeting recently. So maybe working with the new social worker at the police department, which we're very, very happy to see. But we just, we all need to be doing things differently. And we're just asking for your help to help us so we don't need this ordinance. And we don't have the problems that we do have. And it is a problem. We want to acknowledge that. So that's all I have to say.
The other thing real quickly is that room in the end frequently doesn't have enough beds. Not every church can sleep very many. They don't, during the summer, they only have about three nights covered. So there aren't options a lot of nights. And at this point, they are, they have been so full lately that you have to text a number in the morning and get a number. And you, if there's enough beds, you'll have a place to sleep that night. And that, I just was speaking with Chris Hovin from St. Vincent and there's, there's a woman was looking for a wagon to put her child and belongings in because they had nowhere to go tonight.
So that's, that's what we're facing. So, but appreciate, appreciate you hearing us out. Thank you.
And we appreciate you all's comments. We had, you know, several businessmen here at the last meeting, you know, talk about the other side of this.
Sure.
And I think we're, and I'm just going to speak for myself at this point, we, we've had a number of meetings with the people who were involved with Bethany Haven, with Room at the End. I've been involved, talking with Chris Hovin a number of years. And the council has supported Bethany Haven financially. We've supported St. Vincent de Paul and the food pantry financially. We have Room at the End. A lot of communities our size don't even have any of that, you know.
That's true.
I think we have shown that we do understand that they have needs. We just don't have enough finances, the city doesn't, to go out and buy a property and create this or any spot.
When that's.
And I think we finally got to the point after hearing comments from the community and during our homework, you know, dealing with all the homeless population on our properties, you know, in our community parks and our parks up here. And you mentioned a number of things, some of the problems that have come with that. I think we finally made the decision that just doing nothing and calling the police to show up every time is not an answer. And so we, we looked at, from a staff example, just constantly moving them out of the community park and up here and stuff, and then literally setting up camp sites. People walk those trails and stuff and women are not comfortable at the farmer's market anymore, even parking there except on the days that the farmer's market are there. In the evenings, that, that parking area is very underutilized and I think we know part of the reason for that. So I think we've been doing some research, other communities. Unfortunately, I know from several, for the, about several, but some I talked to may close their Room at the End and Bethany Haven and stuff because of problems and just pushback from the community. Because many people want to identify those facilities as the reason why more homeless show up in your community. And I'm not going to give a grade on that or not, because judge for yourself, I guess, on that. But I think that's where we are at this point, just doing nothing. And doing what we've been doing the last three or four years has not been more. We need to take a more proactive stance to try to get our hand around this. And one major additional financial commitment we made was bringing on this social position with our police department. Their responsibility is going to be major interacting with the homeless population. They have to direct them for the services they need and get them back in touch with their families. So there again, you know, we're not trying to turn a blind eye to their needs, but I think we have to try to balance. And I think that's where we are with the problems being created in our business community and on our trails and our parks and stuff. We've just got to get a handle on that. There's a lot of drug use associated with many of those people. I don't think anybody would deny that. And so that's, you know, creating problems as well. So we're not finished. If this gets voted on this evening, we're not finished with our efforts. I think we'd be more than happy to hear from the past coalition, you know, some of our council members, this is part of their agenda items. And I've met some of our staff, Major Celia and the chief, you know, we're happy to continue to be and be proactive, but this is something that we think is a start to help us, but not, it won't fix the problem 100%. That's just my, my plow, I think where we, where we are as a legislative body and as community leaders trying to balance the issue. Doing nothing is not going to accomplish any of that. So I'll open it up here, the comments from the council.
To, to let this, keep back on what the mayor said, at one point, and it wasn't recent, but we had green space between our two church buildings. We had someone actually pitch up a tent, was staying there.
Oh, I'm glad.
And we had another situation where someone was living in their van and they hooked up to our electrical.
I've had that happen in our parking lot several times.
And we were concerned about that because they had a space heater in their vehicle. And so we were worried about liability. And so we had to cut off the outside outlet. So we, we all care about it and pose in our heartstrings, but if we had a solution, we would be having this conversation.
Sure. What I'd like to ask, if you don't mind, Audrey, you know, there's, part of this is in order for us to, it's not designed to go aggressive and lock them up, but there's certain things that we can and cannot do on the public property. And so we have to enact some legislative language in order to give us the legal authority to maybe address a situation like if this was on an abandoned property, where it's been some abandoned property very close to their church and residential may have had very serious issues. We really didn't have any legal remedy. So Audrey, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, so I guess there was the first piece of it. You know, it is public property, right? And so it's hard to be trespassing on public property. And so I can't, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to not see you.
No, you're fine. No, you're fine. I'll leave now.
And so, you know, that was part of it. You have the ordinance specifically says that a period of longer than four hours is what the limitation is. To the mayor's point, we had several properties that were abandoned. And so of course, we as the city and not the property owner cannot enforce their property rights so necessary to keep someone from trespassing. And it was to the extent that one of the buildings was, I mean, scary to be in in the first place and they were having fires and it was very close to other structures. So it was a concern, we felt like for, you know, safety of the community, that if there's a fire were to start there, it would spread very quickly because of how close they were. And so that's part of it. And so this gives us the ability to at least help with some of those situations. Of course, you know, one of the other concerns there on that property was significant evidence of drug use there, which creates a health issue potentially. You know, so those are some of the issues. And to your point, unfortunately, there are a lot of limitations with mental inquest warrant process.
Yes.
And, you know, I don't think that is any, I think, if I understood you, it's not really any fault of anyone in the.
Oh, no, no. It is, yeah.
The standard is unfortunately so high and, you know, it's a, it's a challenge. I think the intent of the legislature was good, but how it actually plays out does not necessarily provide the services. That's just my opinion from practicing law, it's not in the city's capacity. But there's just all those shortcomings unfortunately in that process and even with Casey's law. So I, I hear your frustration. I do understand it, having been assistant county attorney and dealt with that in the past as well, so.
Would, if somebody is on public property, could you as a council endorse something in the ordinance you want to pass that someone who is on public property and for, you know, is camping and, and I understand this because there's people I've had to ask move away from our church building because they love to come down on a ramp by our basement. And that's, you know, have had to ask several people, because they will build a fire, they will do stuff and I understand that. To put something in where folks who are there could be asked to pick up, clean up, to do something, to beautify the area?
Are you saying if they get cited or?
If they get cited, I think community service is better than throwing someone in jail because you're having a revolving door then. I can't pay my fine, so I get arrested again and I'm in jail, so I can't get a job, so I'm back out and.
Sure. And, and so the ordinance would make it criminal trespass, which is not, is not a, an offense that carries. that carries jail time with it. So I understand your concern about the fines. In my experience, I will say Judge Kelly is a great judge and I have seen him many times. What's the word I'm coming up, finding out with, you know, waive fines for people who it's very clear would not be able to pay.
He does a great job.
Yeah, so I would, I understand your concern. I don't know that I would be so concerned about, understanding that. I do know that happens in other communities.
Yes.
I think that he's very understanding and I would think that, you know, he, if he were to impose a sentence in a case that came before him, I think he would consider something along those lines, especially if it were recommended by the county attorney.
Because one of the things we're looking at is to put people to do some imposition for they can help the community instead of being a burden.
And loan some jobs bills perhaps.
Yes, along the way. And I think that would go a long way to, while you were caught camping or trespassing, well, we're going to make sure, because I know the, and it can even be, you can even use someone like, well, this is the county, but county jail, I know, uses inmates to do cleanup all over the place and they're, the jailer, he's doing a great job with that. And maybe that's something that could be incorporated into, because it's already, something's already set up and is already supervised.
Sure.
Things along that line.
I know that a lot of times, you know, if there, community service is a component sometimes of a sentence, you know, and they have to provide proof of whatever that might be. So I mean, I'd be happy to discuss that with the county attorney's office as well.
I don't think that's something we can legislate.
No, no.
Here in our ordinance, so.
Understandable.
Audrey, work with the.
Sure.
But you can't make anyone do that.
No.
Unfortunately.
Not unless they have a conviction.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
And anything, any kind of fine or anything, it's just a misdemeanor. So it's not going to be a felony charge.
Or a felony.
It's basically a misdemeanor fine. So you're not going to lock anybody up for that and you're not going to, you're not going to make them do community service or doing that. So unfortunately, with this ordinance, it's written, the way this ordinance, the way it's written here is, is really a soft ordinance, really. It just gives, gives our law enforcement people some type of backing to where they can have some teeth in issuing the orders that they do. So it's not just, it's not the easiest thing in the world, Jim or Jack.
Well, I understand.
And that's just for public property, private property, you know, you can do whatever with public property. His word's really gotten out of hand.
Okay, I think we've addressed this kind of whole size of the issue, I think, in the last two meetings. Unless you're all having the things to discuss, I'm just asking, is the council's desire to have a motion to approve this on the second reading or do you want to?
They have to make a motion to approve the ordinance B 2023-15.
No, we have a motion to approve B 2015, 2023-15 as it relates to camping on public property. This is being seconded. We have a motion, is there a second for that? A second motion by council of government? Okay, any other discussion?
I just want to say, you know, I think all of us here are like you all, we both see both sides. And this is one of the toughest votes, I think, compared to that, since I've been on City Council.
I agree with you, but I appreciate your compassion. We share the same compassion. I think this might be a good step to start to try to figure out the problem, but there is definitely another step that needs to take. So thank you guys for everything.
Thank you.
Just thank you all for what you are doing this evening and also what you are doing for me and then helping with this situation we're dealing with right here. Okay, since the second reading, so we'll call for individual votes. All those who are available, would you sit about and say an aye, starting with Councilman Shekels.
Aye.
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 Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a first reading on B 2023-16, conditional use permit, moratorium. I mean, this can be introduced. This is a payment request, requesting the planning commission as well as the board of adjustments.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to introduce ordinance B 2023-16, conditional use permits and ask our city attorney to read the summary, please.
Thank you. Ordinance B 2023-16, conditional use permit, permanence. An ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on conditional use permits for short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts in residential zoning districts pending the adoption of remodel regulations. Whereas the city council is instructed, the joint city-county planning commission of Nelson County to undertake a review of the short-term rental and bed and breakfast regulations in Article III and Section 6.1 through 6.9 of the zoning regulations. And whereas the city council has concerns that an increase in short-term rentals and bed and breakfast has detrimental effects on the residential character of neighborhoods and the city's housing stock and provides unique challenges to the permanent residents of those neighborhoods. And whereas the city council would like for the planning commission to review and adopt short-term rental and bed and breakfast that promote tourist experiences but protect residential neighborhoods and encourage long-term residency in neighborhoods and vibrancy of the community. And whereas the city council would like to create a period wherein no new conditional use permit applications for short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts in residential zones will be accepted or processed during dependency of the review and adoption of short-term, revised short-term rental and bed and breakfast regulations. And whereas during dependency of such review and adoption of revised short-term rental regulations, the city council desires to preserve the status quo by preventing changes to the existing land uses. And whereas it is anticipated that the renewed adoption of revised short-term rental regulations and bed and breakfast will take no more than three months, now therefore be determined by the city council, the city of Barstown, as follows. Section one, that there is hereby imposed a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing by the joint city-county planning commission of Nelson County and the Barstown Board of Adjustment of any conditional use permit applications for short-term rentals and residential zoning districts. Section two, this moratorium shall be effective until it expires on the earlier of three months from the effective date of this ordinance or the effective date of the revised short-term rental and bed and breakfast regulations. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage, proof, and publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. I think you all already have seen the letter we got from the planning commission director and I'll just give you some background on this. We as a legislative body, we're the ones, we have to pass a moratorium question because planning zoning and board of adjustments can't do that on their own, but they contacted the board of adjustments and the planning commission, probably three or four months ago, and said, we've got an issue, we'd like to bring it back in front of you all, you know, for another moratorium to give us time to review the regulations that, you know, we just recently, you know, did moratorium earlier, but they were finding, you know, like many other communities, they're finding that need to be addressed, other regulations need to be addressed again. So in order to do that, they want us to pass this 90-day moratorium to give them that time. And Jan was going to formally be here to present this evening, but she has a hearing on the Botland, where is this, conditional use permit tonight, so that's keeping her tied up there. So I would just probably kind of paraphrase some of her letter and some of the issues that are needing to be addressed, some that you all are in agreement by this request from the planning commission and board of adjustments. But recently, the city of Barstown, there was 24 requests, 32 in the county for the board of adjustments and the conditional use permit for short-term rentals that has happened over the last 19 months. In that, 65% of all of the board of adjustment agenda items have been conditional use permits out of 85 total that came before the board of adjustments. So it used to be the board of adjustments met kind of rare, that, you know, just for various, um, property lines and buildings and so forth. Now they're constantly needed and then this is for additional work on the planning commission to do on the application process and so forth. So 66% out of, 56 conditional use permits out of 85 were for this purpose only. Last 85 applications that went before the board of adjustments. And then the increase is affecting our community housing stock. As you can tell, currently 78 units have been approved, we converted to short-term rentals in the city. 141 total out in the county have been approved. And then she makes a point that this pause would allow the commission's regulation review committee to review the current regulations and to identify any changes to the regulations and specifically enforcement. So we go back and she also sets some more statistics to talk, for us to talk about this evening. Again, there's 78 already in the city and 141 out in the county. And I can tell you also from talking to Judge Hutchins, that there's some issues now out in the county because there's a lot of subdivisions, not as many in the city, because we don't have as many, that have permits and restrictions, but they have never made it part of the deed restrictions and they don't have active homeowners associations. So now when these requests are coming up out in the county, those residents are asking the planning zoning to, we don't want this. You know, we have, we have homeowners regulations that says you can't have it. We said, well, you know, the planning commission and the judges, they said, well, you know, you didn't bother to do all the legal part to enforce those. And so it was never a problem until you had stuff like this going on. I know in town, I know some subdivisions have it and they keep an eye on that and when these applications come up, they, they make a point of notifying the board of adjustments that they have opposition to it and so forth. And that's what, that in those cases, the ones I know about, those are recorded restrictions that are part of the deed and the title work you can do that shows that there are those type of restrictions in place from having a business operation in the community. But here, I'll just comment a little bit on some of the reasoning that Jan also provided was, is, you know, the housing stock and affordable housing, we know, is a, is a problem that's creating challenges for residents to find housing, permanent residents to find housing. The increase in short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts is a challenge to residents and neighborhoods, part of what I've just talked about, including parking and neighborhood restrictions. I've talked about that reason. Parking, Jan shared with me, you know, you've got an application, says you've got a three-bedroom, two-bath house that has room for two cars to park in their driveway, and when they, they said, you know, that's, that's what they get approved for. But then they have six people, eight people show up to stay in that house. There's now four cars in the driveway because all eight people showed up in their own car. There's four more cars on the street. And a lot of our streets in Barstown, there's a number of residents that don't have driveways. They depend on the street parking for their day and night parking. Now everybody works based only, there's nighttime. And so that's impacting the ability for people to park out on our city streets because of the short-term rentals there. The moratorium will not affect any approved short-term rentals or bed and breakfasts that are already approved, but it allows the planning commission's regulation review committee, that also Councilman Butler and Councilman Doges are part of that committee, to review the current short-term rental and bed and breakfast regulations and to recommend changes from the city council. So that's kind of the background here. If you kept up with this, I think, and I know I have and some of the other councils have, this is not unique for Barstown to be, we have this, it's happening all over the country. I know Lloyd will just have either the second or third round of changes and we're even seeing other communities, they're passing permanent moratoriums. I think Austin, Texas is one, or maybe Dallas is one, others, because there's just so many that are, and the, you know, the staffing needed to regulate them and keep up with them. And we've had a major city that may have dealt with this. There's a rule about how close that the host, if they don't live in the short-term rental, the host is supposed to be within a 15-minute, I think 15 minutes is the time away from the home or the place to react if there's a complaint about noise or other problems. And we're finding out that when the original application was made, the host did in fact live 10 or 15 minutes away, only to find out six or eight months later, next time around, they're not anywhere even within the county. They're living in Colorado or California or maybe in some cases that hopes they ever really did happen to. So that's a regulatory situation that we really don't have good regs in place to keep up with that. So that's just, I'm giving that background based on the feedback I've got from the planning commission to do all the board of adjustments and some other property owners in the community that have been impacted by the short-term rentals. So I'll open it up for any other discussion.
You know, it's, it's so evolved because that's what we need the moratorium, just kind of slow things down. And it's always a little niche that people find that may get work or not work. And if you look, you were talking about all over the country, even New York City is tightening up on this. I mean, they've got so many problems there now. And so we've got to figure out how's the best way to do this and probably one of the angles we're going to be looking at probably is, is in order to do this, you're going to have to be on the premise too. In other words, if you have your house, you have to be there too. I can't be 15 minutes away, which we're allowing now, because that, that part will never change for some of the units. Going forward, we've just got to figure out how to slow this down. A lot of people don't like the fact that they live in a neighborhood and then all of a sudden it's a business district and it's like a hotel district. And, you know, we noticed this, it started, this is a long time ago, if you remember, and got a pretty good jump on it a couple of years ago.
And there are, you know, people who are operating short-term rentals and don't even have permits or licenses and all that. And again, we have no, no teeth in the ordinance to try to combat with that, so that's.
It's a tax thing too, you know, it should be allowed in the playing field. You know, hotels are doing right legitimately or the, the short-term rentals that are doing right are paying their taxes just like everybody else does, but there's so many that, that aren't.
Right. And Jan's staff is pretty small as it is, but they're literally keeping track of this , you know, on Facebook and other ways of marketing to make sure that some of the short-term rentals that are in fact advertising in Barstown and now City County are, are property, have applications and have permits for it. But we're finding out there's a growing number. The one thing that didn't help us on this was a, was a major article in some publication that identified Barstown as having some of the best return on investment for short-term rentals in the entire United States. And with the burglars of the world and all the reasons people want to come here. Well, now the other side of this is many, many, many of the applicants are investors from counties, many counties away. I mean, I've dealt with two in my own neighborhood, that one was in California and one was like in Montana, wanting to buy. And our homeowners association said, look, we, ours are, you know, we have data restrictions that are part of them. And they didn't know that. And I said, you know, we can't prevent a business from being operated in our, in our neighborhood and we certainly can't have somebody managing it from California or Montana, you know, home in the home in four bedrooms. We had 10 or 12 people there. So I know that's an issue around as well. That article has just got people, investors, you know, calling people up, wanting to buy their homes, you know, for sale. So I think this is a logical request from them to give them a 90-day moratorium and see what, like, what you can go and place to give them a little more ability to administer this and some teeth to maybe keep some of the illegals from operating like they are. So this will be a first reading. We've had an introduction of it and read the reading, so. So is anyone having other comments they'd like to add and throw in? I've been doing most of the...
Do we need to have like another meeting rather soon, like we do sometimes?
I mean, you know...
Is she going to get bombarded over there in the next two weeks for...
I don't know. We did not get specific instructions as such, but I know in the past we have done, you know, a special meeting. I'll defer to Mayor.
I don't have an answer for that. I guess we could touch base with Audrey on that, or see if Jan. Seems to me the last time we did this, we did it on two regular meetings.
No, I think we, no, I think we didn't. I thought we moved on quick. I thought we did like the next day.
I don't know.
So a couple of orders at the end of 2021, and we get in there 20...
Did you check it on that?
If we do, I think we did it the way it's supposed to.
Right. I think we did. Somebody besides me might have to chair it. I might not be here after tomorrow for a few days. So...
About a month or so ago, Greg and Jan and I attended a meeting in Lebanon. And I think it was the president of Harton County's Builders Association that reported that they had either 50 or 60 short-term rentals in Harton County. So a county that's almost three times the size as us has a whole lot less than we did. So that's really, I know, yeah. But it was really interesting to me and kind of to how fast it's grown here.
Right. Okay, well, this far reading, there's everyone, she's in here.
Okay, so, well, I guess Gary can work on this thing.
Thursday, 24 hours, members, to the council and the press, so...
Do you want to do it Thursday at noon or Friday at noon? I mean, I won't be able to take part in no thing.
I think we should do it this week.
Yeah, Thursday at noon. Thursday. I won't be here Friday, Thursday. If that didn't work here. We got a fall break coming up, so some people are going to do it.
Okay, I'd like to not be up here, so y'all like to pull in a negative pro temp. I think we don't typically report a bill, but we can do that.
Thursday, we're free. We're just going to meet person.
Can we go ahead and do that now and make that part of the minutes? Because we may approach it.
I think that'd be good, be good.
I'll make that motion.
I think your motion and vote for that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams, a special call reading on the second reading of this ordinance, number E 2023-15, conditional use permit moratorium.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I'm sorry, sixty-one.
Can we do it in person? Is that, is that okay? Would we really do it in person? Could we do it in person?
I thought you were in person, but you didn't.
Me, I just thought it was Jordan or whatever he preferred.
Was Roland's motion to do the meeting or was it to...
I thought it was both to do the meeting and to like bill.
Thursday and...
To hold the meeting Thursday at noon and that Bill was, Councilman Chekels would serve as the mayor pro temp at the meeting. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And I think the same motion was what Councilman Chekels was getting a second, right? That he could serve as...
So we have a motion to second, we're having some discussion now as to, can we be via Zoom or, you know, can you all meet in person?
Get everyone here and be, what's your friend?
It's a little tough on me to, I gotta jump here and go straight.
We bring you in on the...
I can do that, I can take out that, do virtually.
Can I give us time? We can still comply as long as it's...
Yeah, we're going to find a D and G. Bill's pro temp, though, can vote, I think.
Yeah.
I'm glad they didn't let that happen, so it's no problem.
We still have four, we still have four councilmen.
Councilmen, that's going to be going to the country.
We should have enough.
We have enough. We can zoom in.
Council, you mean, it's no problem.
So we're going to be in person. Aye, so we have, we have a motion to the second to have a special call meeting and address to the second reading of this ordinance. These things, we'll have a meeting in person. Councilman Chekels will be mayor pro temp at the meeting, and some may have to participate. Is there...
So I have a question. Do I need to amend my motion to say in person? Because my motion didn't say in person.
No, I think we're given the option because Councilman Hibbs cannot be here at all. So that's permitted for these time meetings.
Once we identify them, then...
We'll have a focus out before noon tomorrow for Thursday's meeting.
Any other discussion? You have a motion to second. All the papers say aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. All right. We've got any reports from the staff and the committees. I'm going to call on our chief, and I mean, we all might, I'm going to talk back to the Kentucky Bourbon Festival. If y'all have some comments you all would like to make.
From our perspective, it went great. Talking about the short rentals, we, at the Bourbon Festival itself, we talked to a lot of people. I think the only person I saw there was, literally Barstown was leasing her. And we asked a lot of the question, like, where are you from and where are you staying? People from Rhode Island, New York State, Fort Lauderdale, Texas, and most everybody was staying in it. Nobody said, I'm staying at the Holiday Inn. They're all staying in short-term rentals, all the way to E Town. Louisville was sold out because of everything going on there. But to your point that that's obviously a growing thing, but for us, Bourbon Festival went great.
Yeah, we didn't have any issues with the Bourbon Festival. We did respond to two structured fires out in the county. One of them down at Deesville, we were there for six hours. The staff did an awesome job. They, you know, their resolve and pride that they took in trying to save that property, they had a heart and desire, we just didn't have water. We had limited water supply out there. We were running out of water as we was trying to fight that fire. So they did an awesome job and I'd like to commend them for their effort down there that day.
Feedback, my observation of feedback, I think the Bourbon Festival was a great job on the higher power city staff and preparation prior to. The city looked wonderful. We had a lot of cleanup efforts that went into place before that getting ready and public works and Philip Groves and his group, everything down to power washing the sidewalks and handclaking the signage. City, state, and federal highway signage, we cleaned all of those by hand. We had cooperation from our fiscal court and the judge and Jader Hall because the jail crew, then Buck Smellin, they also provided some help picking up trash. We had several of them working with our public works department out taking our curbs and gunners prior, and they did a really, really good job. I've already spoke to three distilleries that were waiting right after, and they were just very, very, very pleased with how, three of our local distillers, not out of town, but pretty local, was some of our larger ones and one of our smaller ones, and they said they, best Bourbon Festival on their side of things they've ever had. So I want to thank our staff and employees for all their work, be ready for that. Business First, media was really prevalent here. Business First did an article, I think it was published on the Friday edition, a live newscast from here. The guy who did the Business First, he's now run a podcast about it, talking about how big an effect the Kentucky Bourbon Festival is on the state of the country. So it was really well done. So we got a lot of great exposure from that, so well done.
C. Holes said, thank you for giving an extra day for it.
We had to close down today. We were trapped. We were fenced in during the Bourbon Festival, so we couldn't get through, so.
C. Holes.
So I think that worked out all right. Any other, anybody else have a comment?
If you don't, I'm not going to talk about the Bourbon Festival. Street, I'm just going to mention our street committee meeting we had about downtown parking and it was a hearty meeting. It was really good. There was a lot of people there and I think maybe a comment said, I think we made more, made a lot more better, a lot better decisions than the guy we hired, probably coming to do our study, we probably knew more about it than he did. But I think we're going to be moving forward on that because it is, it is, it's not a real big issue, but it is an issue. So I think our biggest thing we came out of that, we were going to probably start enforcing the two-hour parking, to we decided to, we need a three.
I think we kind of were going to come, I did some research to be able to get some options to compare. I don't remember what number we had, but some cities have extensive, there's actually a parking manual for residents on the City of Frankfurt's website.
Really?
About 12 pages long.
We're not talking about a lot of radical changes when we think we're at a point now where we've got such a demand for parking and once again, there are a level of people abusing our situation, so we need to maybe, we haven't reviewed, I think our ordinance hasn't been looked at for...
1970 or 1980 something, I don't remember very.
We're here 40 years, I think it might be time to, you know, so that's kind of what we're doing, we're taking us, you know, not going to be, you know, overburdened, so we are thinking additionally, see if I works out by maybe pulling back some parking restrictions and, you know, you can't just park on the street for eight hours a day, 24 hours a day and all that in the rural, busy areas of town. If you got some, Council on Bourbon Festival, anything else to talk about?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to let you know, I think PLG did 47 posts on Facebook, and I know the standard was there most of the weekend too.
Oh, good, thank you.
Mayor, talking to Lloyd, I think thanks to Greg and his wife, for opening his house. They cooked for us, they cooked for everybody, all the first responders on Bourbon Festival Day, and that means a lot. So, you know, it's tough for our people to get away to have, you know, a meal, be able to sit down for a few minutes because they're out in the crowds, making all those things. So thanks to him and his family for allowing us to be home there.
Yes, I think you all did a good proactive job. We didn't shut this street down like we used to, but when they let out at six on Friday and Saturday night, you know, it's just like a ballgame letting out or a concert. Most of the pedestrian traffic, they shut it down temporarily to get the people safely across this street and to their cars who are up there for dinner and cheers on Saturday night, so that worked very well. It was a little hiccup, but Joe, Joe picks that a little later. Anything else with the council members? All right, we've got two greats, excuse me, we've got some great sites. One great site for Roger Dewey, two great sites for Michael and Valerie Rickett, and three great sites for Brian and Cecil. We approved them by unanimous consent. Roundabout, I received a mayor's update. If you might see, some of you depend on how you came tonight, you might see they go staging their equipment, they're going to start paving probably tonight. They're going to do paving tonight. They're finishing the apartment paving, it's going to go on the roundabout, that's starting this week. They're going to do it tonight. There's a big enough issue in the daytime with what's going on there, catch stop traffic payments, that's why they're doing it tonight. And if all goes well, I think by the end of next week, it will be an operational roundabout. Won't be completely finished, but the start and stopping will be changed to operate like the wood at the courthouse is now. It'll be a true roundabout where you have, right away, if you're in the roundabout, you have to yield, carry in the roundabout, so that shouldn't be coming to the head pretty soon. We've been doing major water sewer projects in town. Probably hadn't seen as much of this as we had in some of the years in the past because we hadn't had to literally dig up so many streets because of this. The water project is primarily this street going toward, towards Bluegrass Court, so that's all, just about finishing it up. And the sewer projects are primarily in our alleyways and around our manholes because they're sleeving, a lot of that repair is being done by sleeving, again, not having to dig up the entire line, so that's going pretty well according to Jessica. The sewer project will take a little bit longer, the water project is just about done. Then the last thing, the mayor's part, we've been given permission by the state and the feds now that we can bid it and start after October 1st. Bid packages are available now. We will open those on the 11th, and then council members, you all will award the contract per recommendation of our engineering people, Jessica primarily. So we hope we return there to November, by the end of the year, all goes well. So we're going to plan on groundbreaking and so forth from that, you know, probably happen sometime later in October, before the first of November. And we're going to try to invite some elected officials who had a part in our $150,000 grant about for the land and water conservation fund, and so hopefully some of them could show up. That's good news. That's been a project that started right before COVID, got sidetracked because of COVID, but it got resurrected and we're pretty close now. So that's all I have for my update.
I wanted to ask Chief Smalling if he could give us an update on the second baby bill.
Yes, so the alarm system has been installed, so I think tomorrow we're going to start the testing. I'm going to do seven days of testing, make sure the alarm system is operational like it's supposed to be, because we don't want a baby put in there and not everybody getting owed by it like it's supposed to. So we'll start that testing, once we get done with that, we'll start our training on it, and I think we're going to try to do the commencement ceremony on the first of November.
And what was the name of the company that donated all of the...
So Interstate Security, they donated all the equipment for the alarm, and they're actually going to take care of the monitoring too, free of charge.
Thank you, Chief.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, I missed it, there are, I guess, pay the third street too, looks like...
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to the medical staff right before it commenced. They were hoping they could get it done today, tomorrow, tomorrow night, not tomorrow night, but they're anticipating rain, so that's why they're not doing third street first. They're doing the roundabout, they're working on it tonight.
So they're not at 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
I talked to the whole staff. They were looking after ice and everything, getting ready.
So that'll also include night work for third street, do the outs, Friday, December.
They're staging lights along the area, I noticed when I was coming in.
Yeah, I think we have to move those up. One of them.
Third street, sure.
I've seen almost as many positive comments about the roundabouts as I saw negative before it all happened. So people are saying that it's slowing traffic down, I would say, appreciate it.
Yeah, they get used to it.
I'm around the courthouse a number of times a day, and it's, you can't see any rural issues at all.
I think it's better too. I'm better by a lot too.
All right, nothing else? Ask for a motion for adjournment.
So...
Motion by Councilman Williams and second by Councilman Butler. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Motion is carried, we are in a...